Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I'll go ahead and start this council meeting for October 26, 2016. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wood.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilmember Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and start this. And the consent calendar, please.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we split this up in two halves. One until about five o'clock, and around two, about six, and we'll have a second half starting. Anyhow, I'll go to the consent calendar, please.
Yes, consent calendar items four through 10. Items 11 and 12 have been polled for discussion by the public.
Move approval, balance.
Michelle has one item.
Thank you. Staff polled item 10.
That's correct. That's correct.
I'll second. I'll second the balance. Thank you very much. For information, anybody waiting to be here, we did pull item 10 for the staff. The remainder has been for motion and second, please vote. Was there's any questions?
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you very much. Item 13, please.
So item number 11 and 12, we still have to go through. So item number 11 is approval to accept grant funds in the amount of $402,840 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development awarded to the city to support 45 HUD Veteran Affairs supportive housing vouchers. Approval to accept an estimated $14,314 in fees from HUD awarded to the city to administer the VASH program. Approval to appropriate the funds in a total amount of $417,154 to the Neighborhood Services Department, and authorization for the city manager or designate to execute associated grant documents.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I didn't want to interrupt you, but I believe the motion was for the remainder.
For the remainder, but the public polled, public polled item number 11 and 12 for discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. Didn't know that.
We already voted.
Item 11, go ahead.
At this time, Jimmy Naught.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Naught, 127, Sherri Lane. I want to bring to your attention that if any person on Section 8 or this voucher program does rent in the mobile home park, there is an issue that you need to address. And underneath the law, Civil Code, it says basically, if mobile home owners, managers do something, park owners or managers do something, this provides the homeowners the right to do the same. Basically, whatever is good for the goose is good for the gander, so long as the base rent is paid per lease. Agreement, these homeowners and investors in the parks, and now that's what's coming into the parks, is homeowners buying mobile homes, and investors from outside of the parks buying mobile homes and renting these mobile homes, paying a base rent to the park owner, but then all of a sudden raising the rents on those mobile homes to three, and I've even heard of four times the amount of the rent for those mobile homes. Now, this can affect the funds available for distribution under these programs, the housing vouchers, the Section 8, but it can also affect the city's rent control ordinance. As park owners are subject to these restrictions, there is no restrictions onto these homeowners who may own multiple mobile homes. Also, investors from outside of the park, there's no restrictions that the park owners have, which was and is the intent of the rent control ordinance. The rent control ordinance needs to have a second look, because this causes skyrocketing rents. And this is being caused by certain mobile homeowners and investors from outside of parks, and it's moving out of the rental area of the parks by homeowners, as certain low-income homeowners, into high-end mobile homeowners who are making money off of this. This is an area that needs to be studied, and certain restrictions may have to be applied onto rent control. As an example, qualifications of income that be brought into it that would meet certain standards like Section 8, that would have those standards put into it. This needs to be looked at. Thank you.
No further public on this.
No other comment? We'll go back on this off-agenda item. Thank you very much, but this is 14, I mean, 11 and 12 are being addressed, and items, we'll look into that. I thank you very much. Angie, did you need to speak on this item?
No.
Thank you very much. No other speakers?
Ms. Sanchez wants to speak.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is to approve acceptance of grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for 45 HUD Veteran Affairs supportive housing vouchers. So we're simply being asked to accept the grant for vouchers for partnership with the Veteran Affairs. So I'm going to move approval. It does appear that Mr. Naught was addressing a problem within the mobile home park community having to do possibly with, you know, the use of vouchers. So I agree with the mayor that perhaps staff can look into some of his concerns, but as to the item that's before us, I do move approval. Thank you.
I'll second. Second, okay. Please vote on this item 11, please.
Motion approved, five zero.
Item 12, is that one pulled by?
Yes. Item number 12 is adoption of resolution approving the revised Section 8 housing choice voucher program administrative plan. Jimmy Naught.
That was addressed in my previous statement.
Thank you. Thank you. No others?
No further public.
Back to council, Ms. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval.
Second. Okay, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
I will make notice to our city manager and Housing Department that they'll look into them. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Do we pull 10? Pardon? Oh, okay.
So item number 13 is approval of a professional services agreement with HF&amp;H Consultants in the amount of $75,050 to conduct a feasibility study to evaluate the technical, environmental, and economic viability of increasing the city's organics, recovery, and processing capacity. Approval to accept funds in an amount not to exceed $18,000 from Waste Management of California for oversight of waste characterization study, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement.
Good evening, Kerry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. This evening, we have another project to add to our Zero Waste Plan implementation, and I'm going to be introducing Colleen Foster, who's our senior management analyst, who will be speaking on the item. It's on organics feasibility study.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council. I'm going to be providing a background on the reason for this feasibility study and background on the consultant that we're recommending. Staff is recommending that the city council tonight approve a professional services agreement with HF&amp;H Consultants in the amount not to exceed $75,050. $18,000 of which will be covered by Waste Management to cover the expenditures associated with the waste characterization study. The primary point of my presentation will be discussing the reason why we're looking at organics, how it relates to our Zero Waste Program, and how it relates to our ongoing compliance with stricter state mandates. AB 32, which was passed in 2006, the Global Warming Solutions Act, set forth a series of laws that California has passed since then that have required recycling and now are mandating the diversion of organics. The state of California in 2012 set a goal of 75 to 90 percent diversion by 2020. That was actually a year behind our own city setting that same goal. And in order to reach those diversion levels and to reach our emissions goals, the state has identified organics as a material that we need to divert from the landfill. So come along AB 1826, which came into effect in January this year. AB 1826 is a mandatory organics recycling mandate. It requires businesses, including public entities and facilities and multifamily complexes, to reduce and/or arrange for recycling services for the following organic waste. Organic waste is food waste and green waste. So we're talking about pre-consumer, post-consumer food waste, as well as yard waste, being diverted by 2020. And this mandate states that commercial businesses must set up systems, services, to be able to accommodate that. This law came into effect January of this year. It's got a multi-phase compliance approach. Essentially, your largest generators are the first businesses that are required to come into compliance, and that was in April 1st, 2016. And then over the next three years, it moves to essentially the majority of businesses in Oceanside. So year one, our largest generators, generators that are creating eight or more cubic yards of organic material, food and green waste, per week, are required to start developing source reduction strategies, implementing food recovery strategies, and eventually recycling if that's available to them. So in Oceanside, we're talking approximately 80 businesses. The first tier does impact our school district. They are some of the largest generators of these materials. Tier two, which happens in 2017, is an additional 75 businesses. And then by 2019, we're looking at the impact of this ordinance impacting all businesses in Oceanside, an additional 733 businesses. So essentially, by 2019, according to the state mandate, businesses must be recycling and reducing the amount of waste they're sending to organics. One of the challenges in particular, especially in Southern California, is a lack of infrastructure for organics materials. Oceanside, fortunately, we're a step ahead of the curve compared to the majority of other cities in California, especially in Southern California. We do have a compost facility. We do have our own wastewater treatment facility, and we have opportunity in Oceanside. But today, we do not have a system for food materials and for comprehensive organics management. So the reason why we're looking to develop this feasibility study with HF&amp;H Consultants is to identify a road map that would identify the best opportunities for organics management and identify the cost associated with that, so we can be able to create a sustainable and economical solution for our community. So the feasibility study will be analyzing the different systems and approaches, and that, those systems and approaches must follow the Waste Management hierarchy, which is set by the EPA. That means we are managing our resources for the highest and best use. Before throwing away food, we reduce the amount of food we throw away in the first place by looking at the way we purchase materials, et cetera. Before we dispose of edible food, we're looking at opportunity for food donation and food recovery. And then before moving towards composting or processing with energy, we are looking at feeding animal systems, as well as decentralized community compost options. And then the big solution at the end of the day, when we're talking about 2019, being able to serve over 700 businesses in Oceanside and keeping a local solution, we're looking at developing large-scale infrastructure or enhancing our current infrastructure, and looking at options that would include potentially composting, co-digestion opportunities, anaerobic and other technological solutions. Each of these solutions have benefits, such as energy opportunities, and also have different impacts in regards to land use application. So like I mentioned before, Oceanside is poised to be in a good position. What we need to do moving forward is we need a thorough analysis, which this feasibility study will serve, that analyzes the various opportunities on how to manage this material. We're talking to probably 15,000 to 20,000 tons of material a year at full implementation. What systems are going to work? How are we going to cover the cost for that? And how are we going to make it a good solution for Oceanside? And those current opportunities will be based upon what we've already started down in regards to our food recovery kitchen at El Corazon. That is an innovative solution that has the opportunity to divert 15 percent of the organics materials that are currently going to landfill that are still edible for people. So that is an opportunity that we look to develop even further within our feasibility study. So eventually, we'll be setting up a food recovery service in partnership with Waste Management and other feeding organizations. We have the compost facility. We need to determine at what point that compost facility is part of the solution in regards to food. How can they move beyond just green waste? And look at food for residents, as well as businesses, and how that fits in with potential solutions that incorporate energy and wastewater. So Waste Management, our franchise partner and partners to our Zero Waste Plan, they have developed systems in Orange County that our feasibility study would evaluate for a local level here in Oceanside, or potentially in adjacent cities, where we can install a processing facility similar to the core, or potentially the core, and we could process the food materials to eliminate contaminants. And then the idea eventually would be to take that food slurry and then inject it into our wastewater treatment facility for energy and potentially fuel options. And we are even looking at technological opportunities in this feasibility study that would allow us then to take those residuals, what we're currently sending to Arizona, to take those residuals and compost them locally and create a high-value material that can be composted and that is sought after by organic farmers in San Diego. So all of these opportunities will be extensively evaluated through the feasibility study. The fiscal impact of this study, it will be funded through the solid waste and recycling rates and budget. Additionally, Waste Management, as part of their franchise agreement, there is a section in the agreement that states Waste Management will cover and implement a waste characterization study for the city of Oceanside. If we're going to manage our organics materials, we need to know exactly what types of materials are out there. So we will, as part of the feasibility study, have HF&amp;H supervise the implementation of the waste characterization study done by Waste Management, and Waste Management has agreed to cover the cost of that component of the agreement with HF&amp;H. So they will be covering $18,000 of the $75,000 contract. So that concludes my presentation with a recommendation that the city council approve a professional services agreement with HF&amp;H Consultants in the amount of $75,050 to conduct a feasibility study to evaluate the technical, environmental, and economic viability of increasing the city's organics recovery and processing capacity, and accept funds in an amount not to exceed $18,000 from Waste Management in California for oversight of waste characterization study. I'll just be to the left for questions. So thank you.
Seat sidebar, thank you very much. With that.
No public.
Okay. Ms. Sanchez, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I did attend the One Cal Recycle presentation on AB 1826, and certainly, the question in everybody's mind was, who's going to pay for the infrastructure? How is this going to happen? And Oceanside is really poised to be a leader here, and I'm really, really proud of where we are as a city, where we are in terms of staff on this issue. It's, this is an easy one, move to approve. But I do remember that the county said they're not interested, and I guess the questions are going to be, okay, is Waste Management, what part will Waste Management play? How are we going to transport the food recycling program? How is that going to go from, say, restaurants, or whatever the place is, to the destination recycling, be it, be it a food distribution center, or farm, or wherever it is? So I'm really excited, really, really excited that we're going to, at the end of this, we're going to have a plan. Now, how, our, our goal was to do 75 to 90 percent diversion from landfill by 2020. Are we going to be hitting that mark?
Well, currently, today, we are at a 71 percent diversion level. It gets tighter and tighter to increase that diversion level. With the management of organics, we should be able to hit that mark, but it will take developing a significant system.
So we're on track, and hopefully, we'll hit it by 2020, right?
That is my goal, yes.
Great. Move approval. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Colleen, I know this is something that's already in place and it works. It's up in Orange County and in LA, and we're hoping to bring the good news down here to San Diego County. And other than saying 2020, do you have sort of a timeline that, once we get beyond this approval tonight, which I think we're going to do, at what point will we see something? Whether that's a report with a calendar on it, or a truck moving garbage to a new location?
Well, this particular professional services agreement, the term of the contract is six months. So once this concludes, we're also, we'll also be moving into another RFP and another phase of work that will look at infrastructure at the treatment plant, and that could be two to four years.
So that's real world, two to four years, but things are happening right now, and we'll have some results in about six months. Something we can look at.
Yeah, with the larger infrastructure, it's going to certainly have a longer lead time. The kitchen is certainly in progress right now, and we need to get this work done in order to help us lay the path on how we need to proceed next.
So as I've attended some of the education that has been provided for us as the electeds, it's clear that the intention of this is not only to reduce waste into the landfill, but to make food out of what is going to become compost before it gets to that stage. So we're receiving, we will be receiving food that just might be one day off from being pulled on the shelf and processing that into usable food.
Yes, I would say this is a multi-pronged approach, and the feeding people portion of it is just one of those prongs.
Yeah, I went to a facility in San Diego that is processing food right now as part of their training for chefs and food operators, and it's pretty exciting to think that they can take the food that is currently going into the dumpster and into the landfill and stop that and divert it into actually meals. Just because it's got a bruise on one side and you can't sell it for $2 doesn't mean you can't cut the bruised part off and make the rest into something that people will eat. That's not a problem. That's not garbage. So thank you for helping us move forward on that.
Mr. City Manager, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members, after this study is complete, in about six months, we'll be happy to share either the study document with you or a synopsis of it to keep you up to speed on where we are.
Thank you. Mr. Kern, please.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. I thought Deputy Mayor, I thought it was buried in there someplace, but it didn't quite get there. So I'll just make sure we formally second the motion. Actually, the Deputy Mayor and I, on separate occasions, went up to the Orange County facility, and saw, there's quite a small footprint for what they do, and the ability to, and to move it in, move it out rather quickly, and without much smell, without much bothering the neighborhood. So the only thing that we kind of discussed on the trip up there, and I went with Ken Ryan, the manager of Waste Management, is bringing in regional partners. Are we talking to them as we go along? Are we going to wait till we have the study and then go out to our regional partners and say, hey, this is, might be somebody you want to look at, too? Colleen, it looks like you're ready to speak.
We are in communication with regional partners. We've actually, over the past year, have had, Oceanside's had somewhat of a leadership level in, you know, talking to the other agencies, county, even Sandag, on a regional approach, and what that would look like throughout the county, and opportunities for North County to be self-sufficient. And so we are talking to adjacent cities informally, and this feasibility study will provide an opportunity to evaluate the potential relationships and what that could look like and how that could benefit Oceanside.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Feller would like to speak next.
So we had an opportunity to have a pretty full facility some years back. We chose to go another way, and you're talking about this type of facility out at our waste treatment plant? Is that, because there is going to be a smell to composting food with the green waste and that type of thing.
The infrastructure that's being referenced at the wastewater treatment plant would be something where the slurry would be directly injected into a pipe and be in a closed container for processing. So it, we actually want it to produce those gases, because those help us produce energy, but it shouldn't have that smell that you're referencing.
Well, I'm just telling you, I can smell the green waste plant from my house, so it's, the green waste facility, it's just, and it's a different, you know, makeup of waste. I, too, think it's pretty exciting to be going forward with something like this. I'm just, you're not actually thinking of putting it in the outfall. You're just, you're only referring to processing it at the plant, and this, we still have sludge headed to Arizona.
Well, we're looking at options that would produce some sort of solid material out of the wastewater plant that could be used locally, and so that would be our best-case scenario, and we'll be evaluating that in the next year.
So that'll be different than the sludge that is produced now?
Potentially, it could be mixed with the, with the bio solids coming out of the wastewater plant.
That should be interesting. Thank you.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, let's try a closed session report from the city attorney.
Thank you. The council met in closed session to discuss three items. Item one was conference with labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Police Officers Association. There's no action to report on that item under the Brown Act. Item two, conference with real property negotiator involving the vacant parcel of land situated north of Old Grove Road and west of Frizzy Road, APN 15810315. Negotiating parties, City of Oceanside and Sheldon Development LLC. Under negotiations or price and terms for the sale of the property, again, there's no action to report under the Brown Act on item 2A. Item three, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation in the matter of San Diegans for Open Government versus City of Oceanside. Again, no action to report on that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, city council reports, please.
Mayor Wood.
Thank you. Just a second. It's been busy, election year. I know, everybody already knows that. Couple of things, I was involved in October 20th, I visit Oceanside Board Meeting. We had a speaker there regarding hotels and the activities in them. It was pretty nice, I enjoyed the meeting. October 22nd, Fire Station Number Seven had an open house, and it was pretty fantastic. Were big crowds turnout. I really appreciate the people that went to the effort to put this on for Oceanside, and for you and everybody else. I had my 50th class reunion for Oceanside High at the Spring Hill Suites. I don't know why, but there were a lot of old people there. I don't know how that happened, but anyhow, I fit right into that group. Anyhow, they had a great time in Oceanside, came from a lot of faraway places, really enjoyed Oceanside. And the last thing I had, a meeting with all the North County mayors, with Palomar College President regarding vocational training that they have out there with diesel, auto repairs, auto fixing, a lot of other things. It was pretty impressive, and I thank you. That's all I have.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Thank you. Well, I did a tour of a farm in, well, it's called Montado Farms in Santa Isabel, California. I went with two city staff people, and this is a farm that's all the way at the top end of the watershed that comes down here to the coast, and what they're doing there is an experiment to do carbon sequestration. And this is the first organized attempt at doing this in Southern California. They're working off a model that's in place in Marin County, and the person who's doing it there was down here to do this groundbreaking, a really interesting process, and I hope that we can move some of that into Oceanside. That would be a new product for our vacant land to have on it. Also, I attended, along with Councilmember Kern, the second meeting of the Concerned Coastal Communities Coalition. It was in San Clemente. This is an organization that we're discussing, working with other, nine other cities who are coastal, so that we can share our common needs. Instead of each one of us going to the government separately, we will put together a request that represents the hundreds of thousands of people who live in these various communities, and I, it seems that Oceanside's the largest one, and the rest of them are just wealthy small cities. Yeah. So that's a good move. And tomorrow, I will be going to San Diego for a program on Cox Communications and the California Channel discussing the item we just approved, Oceanside's food diversion and kitchen operation that we're looking at for El Corazon, and also... and kitchen operation that we're looking at for El Corazon, and also informing the public about the 13 solar panel array installations that we have either right now or we're in the process of installing here in the city of Oceanside. And that will reduce our, one program will reduce our waste, and the other one stabilizes our costs. But overall, it helps us become a sustainable city so that we can enter into the future without going into a panic to comply with regulations that are above ours. So that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. We've, we're lucky to have a high school like Oceanside High. They have some great tradition, 106 years old. I went to the Hall of Fame, and six more qualified people were inducted, and I'm just impressed every time with the roots of the people of our forefathers here. I went to a dedication ceremony for the Medal of Honor post office on Camp Pendleton, and that is, it's not a big fancy post office. It's a real, just a working post office, and real people work there honoring Medal of Honor awardees. And I thought it was very tastefully done, and it is certainly welcome. We had a Medal of Honor awardee, and he was so gracious. We did a business visitation yesterday at One Source Distribution and Magna Flow. And between those two jobs, they have, or those two businesses, they have nearly 500 jobs. And, no, that's not right, 400 jobs. But they are just outstanding businesses for the city, and I think Deanna saw firsthand what she is tasked with doing is bringing these great cities here. So it was great to have her aboard with us. I went out to Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Reckless, the monument this afternoon out at Camp Pendleton, up at the Pacific Views Center. And Staff Sergeant Reckless was a horse that was somehow put into use early in Korea, and that horse hauled 51,000 pounds of ammunition up and down this hill. He'd go up with the ammunition and come down with the casualties. He traveled many miles with his, all the ammunition. It was just, it's really a spectacular new monument to go see, and Marine Corps, of course, did a great job with that. We have a FedEx ribbon cutting on Friday, and I don't think I've had a birthday in the family this month, so we got about four or five coming though, so thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Just briefly, yeah, I went on the business visit with some EDC members and the assistant city manager and Jack. Yeah, the Magna Flow is quite impressive because you couldn't tell from the outside that's a manufacturing plant. It's unbelievable. It looks like a financial services office from the outside, but they, the manufacturing that they do there and the amount that they turn out every, like every 10 seconds, they turn out a part, and it's quite impressive. The Boys and Girls Club Gala last Friday, that was really well-attended, and they raised a lot of money to renovate part of their facility. They want to build a new kitchen, a tech lab, and there was one other thing, I can't remember, but they raised a good amount of money to get them on the way to that. That was really good. I also attended the night before the North County Gang Commission. This is a county off group. This commission's been in existence since about 2008, and what they do is just gather information to take back to the county board of supervisors. It was, it was a pretty good meeting. I mean, there's a lot of people in the community that are out there reaching out to people, trying to help them, but it was trying to get them connected to services. And one of the things, Serge Duarte, who is the chairman of the committee, really kind of emphasized for people out there that want to get services, want to help with some of these issues, is to use 211. If you call the 211 line and tell them what you need, they can connect you with services. So anybody out there that wants to get connected with some of these groups that are actually supplying services, call the 211 line. I went to the fire department open house, which was really warm, chief. I mean, so it was, it was nice. They got, they cut up a couple cars. They did a lot of different things. I think next year, the only criticism I need to make is have some water there. Everybody needed water. But it was unseasonably hot, and then two days later, it rained like crazy. So it's just, it's fall. It's one of those things that happen. Again, I attended the Medal of Honor dedication of the post office, and it's the post office at Mainside. It's not spectacular in any way as far as the outside, but it is extremely busy. I know we were there for the dedication, and we were in front of the post office, and there must have been 50 people that walked behind the event to get in and out of the post office there on base. So it's very well-used. Also, the Veteran Association North County Oktoberfest was last week, and that was a great event for them. And then the last Friday, I actually took a tour of the San Diego mines, mines that are, the mine aggregates here in the San Diego County area. And people don't realize how important that is for our economy to have those mines operating. So we went to the one down on Oti and the one over in Rancho Bernardo, and how what they pull out of there and how they restore the land when they're done. And then I think all of us were at the Senior Expo, and I think there will be something tonight about the senior of the year, so I'll wait on that one. But we were all there to witness that. And with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Okay, thank you. See, I wrote some things down here. Yeah, I attended the Harbor and Beaches Advisory Committee meeting, and it was kind of a short meeting. We did, there was a lively discussion on a proposal to change the keying of the docks, which was tabled for further information. I attended the North County African-American Women's Association's Gentlemen's Gourmet. Jack, where were you? Mayor, where were you?
He's again.
Huh?
I didn't even understand.
Yeah, it happened this past Saturday. You guys missed a great, great array of food. I got the sides. I'm sure the folks who got desserts and the entrees, I mean, you know, you get to taste other things, but we get to, we generally get to be judges for this wonderful, wonderful event. It's basically, if you're a guy and you like to cook, you're invited to be a chef. You could be either a professional or amateur. Those are the two, the two categories. And you get to taste the best barbecue and, I don't know, it was just really, really great. And it's a great cause. It's all for scholarships. So the $50 that you pay for this is really worth it. It's such a great event. I forget how old it is. Must be at least 20 years old. But, oh, yeah, Mr. Adams was, they announced that Mr. Adams had been involved cooking every single year for 20 years. So it's at least 20 years old. And he actually, I believe, he actually got a prize this time. So that was really great. I spoke at a business meeting of the Abriendo Puertas yesterday morning. And last night, I was with Councilmember Feller. We attended a meeting of Save Our Streets, SOS, over at Baldurama Park. It was, there were a lot of folks that were present, a lot of partners that are faith-based and non-faith-based. And we're really moving forward over the community concerns. There's, you know, where do we go from Annabelle? And how do we move the community back together and refocus our efforts? So it was a very, very good meeting last night. And I just want to say, congratulations, Chief Robinson. We now have a new fire chief in town, and I really appreciate your commitment to our community. I know that, I've seen you around at community events, certainly a couple of the ones that I've gone to that, you know, I've asked you, and you didn't hesitate, and you were right there. So thank you very much. Understand you're going to be going around to community to talk about being a firefighter in Oceanside. So really feel really good about that. So thank you very much.
Mayor Wood, before we finish up, I have two announcements for the public regarding the election, if I can make those. For the public, just to be aware of, for those who are going to be taking in mail-in ballots and dropping them off, we'll have a mail-in drop-off location here at the community rooms from October 31st through November 8th, from 8:00 AM until 5:00 PM. In addition, residents who are submitting their ballots via the mail, you're going to need two stamps because there's two cards in the ballot this go-around, so make sure you have 68 cents worth of postage on all of your ballots that you're mailing in. So those are my two announcements, and that's everything regarding the election.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we covered everything in the first half, and we'll adjourn until 6 o'clock, come back for the second half. Thank you. Adjournment.[1783.47][1783.47][music]